Okay, welcome to the August 28th School Committee Meeting. If we could all rise to.
I'll accept, I mean, I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four zero. Could I have an acceptance of the August 6th Joint Board of Selectment and Finance Committee Meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
That's four zero as well, and I will report, hand it over to Mr. Tabor for the report of the Policy Subcommittee.
Yeah, so last month, we had had a Policy Subcommittee meeting to discuss a couple of different issues that had come up. One of them was related to limiting cellphone use during the school day at Millbury. And this was kind of initiated partially because of recent developments in Massachusetts at the state legislature, where the senate had voted to essentially ban cellphones in, from bell to bell, in public schools across Massachusetts. And so that's still working its way through. It has not made its way to the house yet, but it does look like there's enough support for that to basically put that in place. And they're not gonna, it doesn't seem like there's anything that's specifically gonna derail that. But I'd reached out to nearby school system, I believe it was Northbridge, and they had sent me a bunch of information and data about how their cellphone ban had gone. And so at the Policy Committee meeting, what we'd done was, I had invited one of the students from Millbury, who had been recommended by Grace Fernandez, to come and participate in the discussion. Mr. Lowe was also there as well. And it was a fairly good discussion, but obviously, we want to open that up a little bit more and get some more input from both students and parents. So at the next School Committee, or the next Policy Subcommittee meeting, which will be next Wednesday, I believe, Mr.?
I think we're gonna pair it with the next School Committee meeting, so we're gonna move it to September 11th.
It'll be right before School Committee. Okay, so yeah, that will be publicized. And we're also gonna be sending out a survey to parents about potentially banning cellphones to school and solicit some feedback, because the recommendations from the state are that there are gonna be some guidelines that are gonna be required to follow, but we also wanna make sure that we're sensitive to what the parents are looking for and how to address some of their concerns. And so we'll be doing that at that Policy, Sub-Policy Committee meeting, and then having a discussion about it, and then presenting that to the Greater School Committee in an upcoming meeting. Second piece of that is, second part of the discussion, was a procedure for making accommodations in accordance with a lawsuit that had made its way to the Supreme Court. And there was recommendations from the Massachusetts Association of School Committee. Based on their recommendations, we had put some information in place into the student handbooks. And based on that, the additional language that is going to be going into the student handbook is, reads as follows. "Consistent with Massachusetts Regulations 603 CMR 26.05-1, the Millbury Public Schools, through its curricula and materials, encourages respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. In accordance with district guidelines, families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations related to curriculum content." And this really came about because of that lawsuit, where parents had objected to some of the materials that were being taught in the schools and presented. And so this is essentially a way for them to opt out if they want, or to request additional information on the curriculum as it stands with the school.
Did we vote on the handbook in the spring, or was that just a continuation, because we, or do, we don't vote on it every year, do we?
We vote on it if there are substantial changes, yes.
Should we vote for this language change, just to show that we back it completely?
Yep, and have a record that we, it came before the School Committee and we're complying, absolutely.
So, you wanna make a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept this language.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's four zero. Thank you, Mr. Tabor. And we will turn it over for the report of the administration.
Mr. Wilber, and to the committee, I'm thrilled to introduce to you junior, our Millbury High School junior, Nate Gurnick, who is going to be our representative from the student body on the School Committee. As you know, every School Committee in Massachusetts has a student representative. We've had quite a number of kids come and stay. One of our former student representatives is now on our Board of Selectmen, so it's a great experience to be exposed to how the organization works. Nate is a very active of the Student Advisory Council. And as you remember, he attended all of our joint meetings with the School Committee last year. And he's also a very active member of Environmental Council. We were just chatting before the meeting started. He's got a pretty rigorous schedule. I just, I'd love to hear how your first two days have been.
I mean, they've been pretty good. I, I, talking about cellphones, though, I did notice a start of, like, teachers saying to put them away.
Okay.
Which at the end of last year, I've noticed they kinda gave up on. I mean, I had my phone out, being truthful, and I was using it. But besides that, I think the first couple of days have been pretty good.
It's great.
I mean, I've been enjoying them.
That's terrific to hear. Really happy to have you.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
And Mr. Chairman, there's one other introduction I'd like to make, and that is to introduce my new executive assistant, Kara Stone, who's with us tonight. Kara has many years of experience as the executive assistant to the Worcester, City of Worcester Library Director for many years. And I am thrilled to have her. She's making a huge difference in keeping me organized and on time. She was not, she was not responsible for getting me here tonight on time, that's on me. Everything else.
Well, good luck with that.
And welcome.
And Nate, welcome to you as well. Excellent. Moving to the report of the first day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm thrilled to say that we had a very smooth first two days of school for our kindergarteners through grade 12. Over 1,600 students attended the first two days. 451 at Elmwood, which actually represents a slight drop in enrollment. A big increase at Shaw with 466 students. And we have exactly the same number of students at the junior senior high school as we did on the first day last year, 707. These are not official numbers. I'll be able to give you the official numbers after Desi's official October 1 census. And it's those numbers that are tied to Chapter 70. So those are the ones who definitely count. As always, it seems like more and more families wanna drive their kids to school, which creates some backups. I think each school has a pretty efficient system, but still, it slows, slows down. So if parents have any way of putting their children on the bus, that's a much more effective and efficient way to get to school. But we do have some procedures to make the drop off smooth. And then I also want to say that we, for the most part, our transportation has been smooth. But we did have a little incident this morning, which Mr. Bedard will get to in his section.
And the report on the new teacher orientation?
Yes, Ms. Bootyette.
So on August 20th and 21st, we had our new teacher orientation right here in the high school media center. I get to report out on it to all of you, but I can't take credit for it. I need to give all the credit to our lead mentors that we have for the district. So Jenna Adderidge represents Elmwood as a lead mentor, Lindsay Grass represents Shaw as a lead mentor, and we have Mary Ann DiMaria and Stacy Corey representing the junior senior high school. They work several days in the summer to plan specifically for those two days, to make sure that everything is set. They do the agenda, they get everything organized. But they also work continuously throughout the entire year, because they are the individuals that run. We have, once a month, we have our mentor meetings where we bring all of our new staff together and go over, they'll go over ed evaluation, they'll go over, you know, big events that are happening kind of every month throughout the school year, and they're doing that all year long. This year, our orientation welcomed four new teachers from the junior senior high school. We also do open up the day one of our new teacher orientation to, we had some new nurses. We have previously had our IAs and ABAs, but they kind of requested a training that was a little more specific to their roles, which we were able to do on the two opening days. We had the 25th and the 26th, those opening professional development days. And that was headed up by our team chairs. And so they had that as kind of like their orientation for the district. That, one of the highlights that they shared with me from new teacher orientation was, so big huge shout out to Millbury Parents Club, Jess Orsi. She funded for the new staff. They got woolly water bottles, they got lanyards, they got a cute little teacher survival kit with a bunch of fun stuff in it. But they got their first woolly gear, which was something that, again, credit to the lead mentors. That was a suggestion that they had for the Parents Club, because, and where the four new teachers are right here from the junior senior high school, on the first day back just for teachers, they do a staff photo. It's like a sea of maroon on that day when you're in here. And it kinda dawned on them, well, our new staff don't ever really have woolly gear. So they wanted to make sure that they felt included right from the start. So that was a huge hit. They did their annual tour of Millbury. It, it, it's always a big hit. They drove by Goretty's, drove by all the landmarks in town. They got to do that. They spend those two days with, all of our new teachers get assigned a mentor that will be with them throughout the entire year. We try the best that we can to really have that be job alike, as much of a connection as we can. And usually, that works out really well. And they did some team building activities. They were building some sort of structure with straws that had to like launch something. They, they had a blast. It was a great two days. We're really excited about the new staff. They fit in already. It's like they've always been here. And you're gonna get to meet them at an upcoming school meeting, and I'm really looking forward to that, too.
Excellent. I thought for sure you were gonna say the highlight was the speaker on the second day.
Oh, yes.
But it's fine, it's fine.
They enjoyed your talk as well. They did. Next time, bring some Millbury swag, that's all, you know?
Trust me, I'd take swag over me any day.
Bring it on here.
Excellent. So the next is the Extended School Year Program for students, Ms. Warren.
Excellent. So yes, Christine Warren, Director of Special Education, and this is one of my favorite topics. It is one of my favorite programs. And just to recap, an Extended School Year Program is a requirement to meet the needs of students who do require services during extended breaks due to their vulnerability to substantial regression. So if a typical student might take three weeks to review and update and be acquiring new information, just for example, and a student with identified special education needs might take eight weeks before they're on that ready, what it does is it puts them behind in terms of accessing their curriculum on a continuous basis. And so one of our requirements is to provide services over extended school year time, which is the summer. And so we have our Extended School Year Program. It has expanded in terms of innovative thinking of how to provide services to our students that specifically target their needs, because these determinations are made during IEP team meetings. We had 113 students participate in this programming in one way or another over this year's ESY. We had 51 staff members contribute to this program in some way or another over the Extended School Year period. So 10 teacher positions, but then instructional assistants, ABAs, RBTs, the behavioral technicians, one BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and other related services that the students require. So some students had a four week, three day a week morning program. Some students had a five week program with a little bit of an extended time period based on what their needs were. And many students had different community outing experiences. Some students had tutoring only. So it was very tailored to our student needs. And yet, it still retains its authenticity and real connection to student engagement and community pride in our woolly community. There were trips to Goretty's that were part of preparing meals and independent sequencing of activities for the students. There were trips to the local Target for targeted shopping to further independence and financial planning, as well as being able to execute from planning to fruition activities. There were opportunities for the students in one of the groups that required this. Trips to local community resources, so the police station, the fire station, just different community landmarks to become more familiar with the service members in their community. And so we give a big thank you out to all of the community involvement in making this happen. And the staff who really put themselves in a position to create the best, most engaging program for our students. And the energy during every day of that programming, whether the student was there for tutoring or classroom time, the energy was so positive and targeted towards student growth, but in a very fun and enjoyable way. And that really sustains our Millbury community and our most vulnerable population in their connections to our community and their desire to, to come in during those extra days and be part of that community. And that carries over into our school year. So I just wanna thank all of the staff members for the energy that they bring. So first, safety is their number one, and they have kept our community and our students safe. But they also bring that sense of commitment to their students every day of that program. And it's just amazing to witness. And again, it's one of the programs that I really value in its authenticity and how well it not only meets, but exceeds the mark of the legal requirement for services. I do also wanna point out that some of the other things that happened, so every year, there's certain things that stand out. If you've been here for a number of years with School Committee, you might remember me talking about karaoke at the end of the last day of, of Program Weeks, and how engaging that was with our administrators joining in and getting to know different aspects of our, our students' lives and interests, as well as sharing some of their own talents and vulnerabilities in, in that area. And, you know, this year, chess and strategic planning stood out. We had a group that happened to become a part of a booster club planning for an event, where they volunteered to participate in the preparations for the event. So they were in the spotlight, being introduced and participating in the booster activities in a very spirited way that I'm sure built many Millbury memories for them, as well as meeting their needs. And I also wanna point out that wellness activities took a front seat this year. So we had students planning their personal goals and using our facilities to take some time to look at their personal health and personal accomplishments, so beyond the academics, using some of the time to accomplish those goals. And again, I feel like the program has really gone beyond the mandate to really become something that expands our student experience and shows our commitment to all of our students during that time. So a big thank you to Michelle Gothier, who is the Extended School Year Director, has been for the last couple of years. Jen Kephart, who took on the director role for the last week of the program. Lori Ovaniak, who has been our ESY clerk, managing the students coming and going in and out of the program for the last few years. And the entire team, who really, again, individuals who have been entirely committed to our student success.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just two other benefits that came out of the Extended School Year Program is, again, we've offered free lunch to the 113 students, so many, many of them took advantage of that. So they're going home on a bus with a full stomach. And then the second thing, we were under budget, so I had to mention that, too. There's no other better place. Excellent. Well, thank you. Mr. Chair, that closes the report of the administration for tonight. Excellent. Let's move to the Finance and Operations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're gonna start with, we'd like the School Committee to consider a warrant article for the special town meeting for our roof project. And you're about to hear a big number, so I want you to know that there's been a lot of research and deliberation about this. We had on July 8th, a Roof Subcommittee meeting to talk about this. On August 6th, we had a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the FINCOM, and the School Committee to listen to Turva and Habib, our project manager and our architect, talk about some options, some costs, and things like that. So they brought us through all the different scenarios, primarily at the two schools we're talking about, which is the Millbury Junior Senior High School and Elmwood Street School. Much of that information, Mr. Maher has put on our website, so if folks are, if looking at home, they could access. If you go to the Finance and Operation webpage, you'll see some information relative to the roof project. And as we do more things, we'll post more on there, just like we've done with the Athletic Field Project and the Shaw Project, so people can kind of follow the progress at home as well. So that's on the website if people are interested. But I kinda wanted to talk about that before I say, I would like, we would like the Committee to- the committee to consider voting to accept a warrant article at our November 4th special town meeting of $19,979,111 to fund the complete replacement of the junior senior high roof, HVAC equipment, and complete replacement of the Elmwood Street School roof and the HVAC equipment. In addition, the warrant article would fund a solar panel array at Elmwood Street School, part of their roof, as well as part of the junior senior high here at Millbury Junior Senior High School, two areas where they've identified structurally we would be able to do that. And we feel it's an open roof area where you're going to be getting a lot of sunlight as well. The warrant article does not include something we've talked about, and we deliberated on, the roof at Dorothy Manor School at 153 Millbury Ave, where it's a property we own. We rent that. We took a look at that, and we're going to hold on that for now. It's a smaller amount we'd be looking for, as well as, there is no roof leak there right now. It's a very, very old roof from the early 90s, so it does need attention, but it isn't as critical. So, we're going to hold off on that. But we've talked extensively with the town manager and the finance director, about this project during our monthly meetings. We talk about it, and they're proposing this would have to be done through a debt exclusion because of the borrowing capacity. We have limited borrowing capacity right now to do that otherwise. So, that's why we're looking at proposing on November 4th, a special town meeting warrant article for this amount for a debt exclusion, which would then be followed up by a ballot for the same amount. So, again, similar to the Athletic Field Project and the Shaw Project, we would need those two votes before we could proceed. So, this would be the start. The warrant will be opened up for the town, for the town meeting warrant in the next two months. But I, we would like to ask the school committee to consider sending along a warrant article in the amount of $19,979,111.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No. I think the only thing I would comment on is, obviously, the joint meeting that we had in early August, we heard what everybody was saying around that table and took that into consideration. And that's kind of why, that original number we had was 21 million?
Twenty-one.
And we were able to get it down to 19 because we took a couple of things out that some of the committee members, some of the other board members in town thought didn't need to be included. So, that's why we're at the 19 now instead of the 21 that you guys saw at the August 6th meeting.
And I know you're involved with this, Mr. Chair, for the school committee to know that there was also some discussion whether this was going to be a project for summer of 2026 or summer of 2027, with all these votes and timeline and getting contracts and ordering things. We're confident, at least the Millbury Junior Senior High School piece, can be done this summer, which helps our need, but it also helps in the pricing because if we had to go to both projects another year, the escalation on that was about 4%.
We also wanted Nate to have at least one year with a new roof.
Yes, please.
You got it.
I'd love one.
You got it.
No more buckets.
Hearing no questions, could I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's 4-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, school committee members.
Move to the best part of your year, Mr. Bedard, the report of the school transportation.
Yes. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, just to summarize for folks that might not know, or folks at home, so, school transportation in district from Millbury requires 10 big buses and four mini buses, one of which we own, three of which we have from AA, and all the big buses come from AA. So, we've checked. Some of them have full capacity, some are really loaded up, especially some of those Shaw runs. And I see Nate shaking his head, so he might be on one of those. But, but we monitor those to make sure that they're not overloaded, they're not overcapacity. And that's what AA Transportation does for us over the summer. They check the routes to make sure that we're in line with that. So, that's all good, the start of the school year in terms of the routing. We have, one thing we've worked at at the beginning of the year is, very shortly, we're going to have the bridge close on Wheelock Ave. Many times, we work with the Millbury Police Department and the Millbury Department of Public Works on projects where things might be closed, but they might allow buses to go through. This is not the case. That's a very small bridge, and there's not much room to negotiate there. So, this will be fully closed to all motor vehicle traffic. So, we have buses, three that go by there, but one, bus two, that has stops right in that area. So, we've had to do a little bit of finagling to get the buses to that location around the construction zone. So, that hasn't started yet, but we've already started getting parents, families, bus drivers used to some of that driving that's required in that area now. I think they're looking at the middle of September to have that closed off, and the project is anywhere from three to six months in length. So, that's one thing we looked at at the start of the school year. One of the things Mr. Myers had mentioned earlier today, as a matter of fact, we had an incident on bus nine, a Shaw run. We had a minor incident where there was no other vehicles involved. It was just the bus. It was, it was making a turn, and the front right panel hit a rock that was on the side of the door. The rock wasn't a movable rock. It was like part of a ledge that was on, in the median there. So, it scraped the door, broke the door, broke the panel. There were 21 Shaw students there. Mr. Tucci and I showed up, made sure everybody was okay. Millbury Police was on site. The EMTs were there. All the kids were checked out. You know, families were notified and so forth. So, everything was fine in terms of, the driver and the students were all okay. AA Transportation sent over right away another bus, and then we loaded them up onto the new bus. So, they continued. They ran over to Shaw. And then, AA Transportation also got another bus because now we were delayed, and there was another route needed for Elmwood, the third tier. So, they also sent another bus to pick up, because we were very late on that, to pick up Elmwood. So, that's kind of the partnership we have with AA in terms of, if something happens like this, they have responded for us. So, we do want the school committee to know that that did happen today, but we responded to that, and everybody is okay. And there's the final note on transportation, related to out-of-district transportation. You might know that we do all our out-of-district transportation through Assabott Valley Collaborative. Many of our districts in this area do the same thing. So, some of the kids that are from Millbury that are going out of district have van transportation that goes to their private special ed school. So, this year, we're still going through AVC. However, there is a new vendor that we're using for that transportation. Folks at home and families are getting used to that probably already, but we no longer are contracting with Vanpool. We're contracting with Cabs for Kids. It's not a cab. It's a real van, but it's, that's the name of the vendor, is Cabs for Kids. So, that's now the vendor for, we have probably 12 or 13 routes that go out of district daily to bring our special ed students to their placements. So, that's a little bit of a change, too.
And they have provided welcome letters. So, we have sent out welcome letters to all of the families, as well as the out-of-district placements, so that their staff that do arrivals and dismissals have all the proper dispatch numbers and contacts and procedures that Cabs for Kids follows as well.
Does anyone have any comments for Mr. Bedard?
I had a question. How did things work out with Vanpool, I believe it was?
I think, with the contract?
Yeah.
And the legal pieces to that. I think Mr. Myers went to a meeting on that, and I think we have a report in executive session for that, I believe, Mr. Myers?
That's correct.
Okay.
The real question is, is did yourself and Mr. Maher get on a bus this week?
Yes, we did. Mr. Maher, because, you know, this is a mentoring program, so he had to get on a bus, so he did. He was on bus three, and I was on bus two. So, I kind of wanted to see what was happening with that Wheelock Bridge. So, if, do you want to, I usually have one little funny story from each time I go on a bus. So, the interesting thing this time was, I was on the Shaw run, and I was saying to the driver, you know, because I get on the bus here, I do the Shaw route, and then I do the Elmwood route, and then I'm kind of stuck at Elmwood without my vehicle. So, I said to the, I said to the Shaw, I said to the driver on bus two, I said, you know, when I'm done, you know, can you drive me back to the high school from Elmwood? And there was a Shaw student right next to me. He says, you can't walk back to the high school?
Wow, this is rough.
Yeah, so, nope, I got to drive. Actually, Mr. Myers ended up bringing me back, but I made it back to the superintendent's office.
Excellent. Well, thank you for continuing to ride the bus, Mr. Bedard.
You're welcome.
Welcome to riding the bus again, Mr. Maher. All right, we can move on to the fiscal year 2026 teacher retirements.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We thought the school committee would find interest in this because we did negotiate last year, a special consideration, a one-time early retirement incentive, $7,500 in a teacher contract. We had done that years ago, maybe 10 years ago. So, we did it again. It was a one-time opportunity. They needed to tell us by June 30th of the year that just passed for a one-year notice that they'd be retiring June 30th of next year. So, we wanted the school committee to know, two teachers have taken us up on that. So, we have two teachers from the high school that will be retiring next year around this time, and they will be entitled to that. They've been here long enough.
Excellent. And does that close your finance and operations?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That closes the finance and operations.
Excellent. All right, we will move on to unfinished business, the Shaw School Construction Project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And we thought this day would never come. Okay? Not only have we completed the Shaw project, but now we've completed the audit of the Shaw project three years later, which, according to MSBA and our project manager, is more typical than you think, that it takes three years of a stretch out to get this thing completed. But part of the final audit for MSBA or the school building assistance is the piece where they have to go through the 37 change orders and determine what pieces, if any, of those are eligible for MSBA reimbursement. So, that's the hefty work, you know. They have to go through all those, approve the change orders, and then see which pieces of those are acceptable. So, we had about $2.5 million in change orders. The original MSBA grant was in the amount of $59,083,918. That was our original, not grant, but the amount for the project. The total MSBA reimbursement for the change orders, so in other words, for the $2.5 million in change orders, they're reimbursing $429,974. And that would mean the remaining payment to the town of Millbury, including the change orders, is $1,295,787. So, that would include the change orders that they just approved for reimbursement, the $429,000, plus they hold back money, like a 5% there or whatever. They're holding money back. So, now that it's all done and they're satisfied, they're releasing to us the money. Now, we've paid all our vendors, but this is being released to us with the change orders. So, the finance director, as well as the town manager, knows this money is coming. They're going to be getting a check for about, for $1.2 million as the final MSBA reimbursement. So, that will bring the total MSBA reimbursement for the $59 million project to $24,067,366. So, just a little over $24 million in reimbursement. So, embedded in here is the final report and the audit report letter. So, this is good news. It's all done. Paperwork concluded. And, you know, I don't, not sure if you realize, but, you know, our project manager is still on the job for that. So, each month, we get an invoice, and they send a report to MSBA on what they've done. So, those invoices should discontinue in the next month or so, too. So, that's all good news.
Excellent. Well, congratulations on closing the never-ending project.
Thank you.
Yep. So, that means the Raymond E. Shaw School Building Committee dissolution, dissolution of the committee. Which one of you two would like to discuss that?
I can field that one, Mr. Chair. So, MSBA requires a standing committee for all building projects, which begins as a feasibility study committee to oversee different options for either repairing or replacing a school building. And that morphs into an official building committee. We had quite a large building committee, so we had the luxury of having a school building finance subcommittee to help work through a lot of the invoices and bring their recommendations to the full committee. I want to thank all 25 members of the Shaw School Building Committee for their eight years of service to making the Shaw School as fantastic as it is. But, all good things must come to an end. So, the MSBA requires us to keep a standing committee until the final audit is complete and approved, and we are at that point. So, it is the school committee's discretion as to when they would like to dissolve the Shaw School Building Committee. I would recommend that the committee consider doing that tonight.
Excellent. Any questions on this? Could I have a motion to dissolve the Shaw School Building Committee?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Could, could you guys send a mighty thank you to those committee members for the dedication?
I'll send them a thank you letter and let them know that they can take their Wednesday night meetings off their calendar for the rest of their lives.
And I have talked to Mr. Plant, Bernie Plant, our chair, who did a great job. So, he knows about it as well. He knows it's on.
Yeah. No, that'd be great if we could send them a thank you for their dedication.
He's a tremendous chair of that building committee.
Excellent. A proposed memorandum of understanding with DS Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, sometime last year, two representatives from WS Development who oversee the shops at Blackstone Valley asked if the school committee might consider allowing access or an egress through the Shaw driveway. As you know, the Shaw School abuts Dick's Sporting Goods right there on the corner, and there is an emergency access gate that's available to police and fire whenever they need to get in there. But the shops have asked us, asked the committee if it would consider allowing them to have traffic during really heavy shopping days around the holidays, use that gate as an egress. And we came to terms on a couple of proposed conditions, one of them being, this is a decision that only the police lieutenant or sergeant in charge that day can make. So, it's going to be the police who are there are going to decide whether the gate is used. And they would be monitoring not just the gate, but also the driveway to make sure that people exit safely and make sure that no one comes, tries to come into the mall through that gate. It's one way out. And we went back and forth. The committee saw a draft and made some, some comments, and we made some additions. And WS Development has asked the committee if there could be one more change, and they would be very happy if we could make that. And that is, in our proposal, we wanted WS Development to reimburse the school committee for any damage done to the Shaw property by motorists who were using the gate to exit the mall. And WS Development said that their insurance would not cover that. It doesn't cover third-party motorists that are not on their property. But that, that's the exact, a great purpose for the actual motorists' insurance to cover. Just one thing to keep in mind is that, that's if we are able to, not catch, but we're able to find out the identity of the person who caused the damage, so we can access their insurance. But WS Development reminded me that they are going to pay to have police there at all times, whenever it's used. So, if there is damage, the police will see it.
Okay.
Any follow-up questions or anything on this?
Were there any other changes made to the?
Their attorney did a red line, just to make it more legalese. But the substantive change is that they didn't want to be responsible for third-party motorists that are not on their property. The rest of it aligned with everything that we had discussed, the signage, the police details, additional detail if we have town basketball at Shaw to make sure people are safely getting across the crosswalk. And again, police discretion. So, it wouldn't just be a convenience thing. It would be a safety thing that the police would say, we need another egress.
And there is still a clause in there that if, the first time this happens and it didn't work, we can cancel it.
At any time, the committee can say, we're done with this. At any time, the committee can say, "We're done with this." But I would just say that WS Development's been a tremendous partner, not just to the school, but the town in general. They were very helpful, instrumental in making sure that we could have regular classes at the old Shaw building, while heavy machinery and trucks were coming and going through the mall parking lot to get to the new Shaw, which was fabulous. And they have been very generous also with the Police Department. They're funding a full-time police officer to help with, with their duties. So, I think that they would totally understand that the School Committee was not comfortable with this, but I think they would really appreciate if we could.
Is there anything in here that says, I think there was, it had to do with how many police officers they would put on those roads at Shaw if they did open it up? Was it two or three?
Two if there's no basketball, three if there's basketball. So, one at the gate, one at the bottom of the driveway on a normal day. And if there's basketball, there would be a third one at the crosswalk between the parking lot of the Shaw School and the gym.
I think my concern would be, if you just have a police officer on either end, if it's not bumper-to-bumper traffic, then you run the risk of people speeding, which would increase the likelihood of something happening in between. So.
I'm thinking that, it's one thing I mentioned to the police chief, to your point about that being kind of a launching pad for some vehicles, is that he would have a cruiser at the end of the driveway with the lights on. So, people know that there's a police officer right there, and if they want to speed, it's at their own risk, right? Hopefully, they'll, they'll slow down. I meant more between the gate at the, at Blackstone Valley, and then one all the way at the other end. There's a, there's a pretty lengthy difference, distance between them. And if nobody's in the middle there with a cruiser, there's lights on. I mean, if they put a cruiser there, then with the lights on, and maybe if there, even if there's nobody in it, probably people can't see, but, until they get to it. But, that's more it. Because if we're removing this aspect of they're responsible for any damages, if any damages happen, then there's, the police are nowhere near it to be even, even be able to see it. And so, that's a little bit of a concern. Like, if they had three people on staff at all times for that, that'd be different, because then there would be one presumably up closer to the school where you could monitor for that. Like, I'd be less concerned about damage way down there, because, like, you're talking about curbs and things like that. But, you know, up, up above, up on top, you've got the school itself, and gates, and various other things. And so, there's nobody there to watch, because the police are just too far away.
I think the other part is, if they're going to open it up, it is going to be bumper-to-bumper. So, I don't, I don't think the cars are going to be able to get to that speed. Because if it's, if it's not a steady flow, I don't, I think they're, they're not opening. I think they're, they're thinking on those days that it's backed up to like Target, trying to get out of there.
Right.
Then they can redirect a whole slew of people. So, I think it would be more bumper-to-bumper. So, I don't.
It would eventually, but not initially.
The first three cars.
Yeah, well, first, yeah, five or 10, but, well, okay.
It's definitely something we can monitor, and the police can monitor, is, is, this is going to be an evolving transaction, so to speak.
That is a good point. Is there opportunity to kind of modify this moving forward, if situations like that come up? Because obviously, like, we can just revoke it at any time, but I think the preference from their side would probably also be, like, if issues come up, let's address them, and if we need to put it in writing, we can. And maybe that involves putting a third person regardless, or putting, having them provide additional signage that, you know, tells people, like, hey, there's a speed limit here, and you still have to follow it, even though it's on a school property, and it's, school is not running, for example.
One of the things that we agreed in the WS Development, representatives agreed, would be to meet with us and the police chief and the town manager on a regular basis, to find out what's working well and what needs to change. They want this to work more than anyone. So, if there are any issues, they want to make sure they're addressed, so that the committee is satisfied with the arrangement.
Great. Any other thoughts or questions? Could I have a motion to accept the MOU?
I'll accept that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's four zero. All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Bedard, are you taking this one?
I will take this one, Mr. Chairman, yes. So, just so the committee knows, we've been approached by the Town Planner, Connor McCormick, as well as the Town Manager, Karen Clark, and the Finance Director, Jennifer Barrett, regarding some, extension of some planned improvements for the downtown area. As you know, they've done a lot of work downtown. Now, they're heading our way. So, they're looking to make improvements at the intersection of Martin Street and North Main Street. And I think in a minute, Mr. Myers will put kind of a map on, on the screen for everyone to look at. But, this downtown renovation project would create new and improved crosswalks, flashing crosswalk pedestrian signs, bike lanes, like you have downtown on Elm Street, a bump out on the east side of Martin Street, where Martin and North Main intersect. The town intends to fund this project largely through a grant, but unfortunately, the bids that they receive, so again, this is their project that they're asking us about, came in $30,000 over budget. One of the things they were looking to cut in order to make that would be this intersection. They were going to reduce the scope of the work here, hence they talked to us, because they know how important that, this area is to us. So, we're very interested in helping them on this. This intersection has been a cause for concern for quite some time. With the building going on up at Park Hill, it's even more. There's a lot more motorists and pedestrians in this area, as a matter of fact, than you can see in your narrative, according to a 2019 traffic study that the town conducted. You know, during off-peak hours, this gets a grading of C, this area in terms of traffic and negotiating the area. During AM, PM peak traff, hour, traffic hours, which is essentially when our students come in and when they leave. Those are the peak hours. The rate is F. It's, it's a failing grade. So, that's concern. We have about 100 students that are within a mile of the junior, senior high school that walk every day, use our sidewalks, cross the street, because they need to get onto the other side of North Main Street. So, when they approached us for us, and telling us about the possibility of reducing some of the scope of the work of this, we're very interested. So, we wanted to see if there's a way that we could help them and help ourselves to better foot traffic and motorists' traffic coming in and out of here. So, our solution, we would like to recommend to you to vote to pay for $30,000, half of it coming from our student parking revolving account, which currently has a balance of $17,000, so we can do that. The other half, $15,000, would be taken from the facility's revolving account, which is money we take in for renting the buildings, the athletic fields. That currently has a balance of over $250,000. So, we think it's money well spent. We also believe that if we pass this opportunity, you know, we, we can't bid on this and do this ourselves, you know, they're already mobilized for this. It makes perfectly good sense to do that. You know, we've, I've also passed this by AA Transportation, and Mr. McCormick has assured me, you know, buses can get through this area safely and everything, because you can see the, how they're making this crosswalk now. It's a little more restrictive. But, again, that's good, in terms of restricting the speed of the motor vehicle traffic. So, anyway, that's a long story, but the idea is, we, we are, we're approval of funding this for $30,000, using two of our revolving accounts. But, we did want to ask the School Committee to vote on this and discuss this before we do that.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could add, along with the 100 walkers, we have 100 of the least experienced drivers in town, who are negotiating that, that intersection every morning and every afternoon. So, it's definitely, I mean, I have a tough time pulling out there when there's traffic coming either direction. So, this is definitely something that would be an investment in our own kids.
Forgive me, was there going to be a light also, a, a traffic light at the end? Or just flashing lights, did you say?
Through, through, Mr. Chair, there'll be no traffic light. So, people wondering at home, there's, there's no traffic light. There'll just be a crossing guard light, crossing light, that, you know, like, our students can hit the butt, and, and it'll allow them to cross. So, they'll, like, kind of like what you see uptown a little bit, in the center of town. So, there, there is some work that they have to do in order to put some of those flashing lights in there. But, no, there's no traffic light. There's no stoplight.
And that, that will be for the crosswalk across Main Street, right? North Main Street?
Yeah, they're going, and they're going to, yeah, so that will be on the crosswalk crossing Main Street, correct, Mr. Tabor, yep. And then, you can see, they're going to paint new lines, crosswalks. So, there'll be a crosswalk at the, at the base of Martin Street, as well as across the street to the other side of North Main.
Will there be a light there for that as well?
There will be. I don't know about that one. I don't think so. Only on, I'll say, our side, on the school side.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Could I get a motion to approve funding $30,000 of this project?
I'll make that motion.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any other new business that you'd like to bring to a future meeting?
Not new business, but a question on old business? Headed with closing the Shaw Building Committee. Does that have any effect on the status of the solar panels?
Through, Mr. Chair, in terms of-
Well, is that, are the solar panels, like, completely approved yet?
The solar panels, we do now know that it's, we're getting production, and it's on our bill. So, I should have mentioned that. So, that is news. You know, we've been saying that it's, it's activated, you know, it's on, it's, it's working. But, we also know we're receiving production from that, too.
Okay.
So, so that was one of the final hurdles, all that paperwork we needed to do, and all that online source we were working on to get all that paperwork done, has been completed. I think the first invoice we received, we had about 4,600 kilowatt hours in production. The more recent one, which again, would, that'd be a summer month, where we're really getting some, a lot more sunlight, was over 14,000 kilowatt hours in the month, which is about 30% of what we, what we use at Shaw. So, it's good stuff. You know, the early indication is, the first two months, very good. But, that's been completed, yes. That hurdle has been done.
Okay.
That's great. All right. Hearing nothing else, I will take a roll call vote to move into executive session. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A3, the committee will consider convening an executive session to discuss strategy with respects to litigation with Vanpool Transportation, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the committee's litigation position, and I so do declare. So. Mr. Tabor?
Yes.
Mr. Crystal?
Yes.
Mr. Billy Savage?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we will, we will come out of executive session and close our meeting without any other future business. So, with that, our meeting is adjourned to executive session.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. Nate, thank you. It was nice to meet you. We'll see you again.